Mike Ross, call to over the Sparks City Council meeting of June 9th with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
And City Manager Trisco.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, we don't have a invocation speaker today, but I thought it might be appropriate to, we all heard about the two police officers that were killed in Las Vegas. The two Las Vegas metropolitan police officers were killed yesterday in Las Vegas. Police Officer Alan Beck, who was 41-years-old, and Police Officer Igor Saldo. So I thought it might be appropriate to have a moment of silence for those two young men, Thank you. Okay, if you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Kerrigan, would you lead us?
I will. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, comments from the public? I have a couple of cards. Katie Keppner?
Nepper.
Nepper, I'm sorry. Come on up, Katie. You have three minutes.
A long time ago, I came here.
One second.
I'm sorry, my name is Katie Nepper, 2106 Ponderosa Drive. And a long time ago, I came and asked that you all resurfaced the tennis courts at OPO Park, and you did. And everything was great, there were people waiting to play, and then the skateboarders came. They had ramps, and then the soccer players came, organized, mind you, kicking balls into the net, taking the nets down, courts deteriorated, and I thought, "We don't deserve this," so I would never ask you again. Lo and behold, you've resurfaced the courts, got a picture. Looks great, nets are up today, they weren't up yesterday, those were taken yesterday. And what I'm asking is if it's possible, there's two signs, and you can see some of the signs on there, they're hard to read, says tennis only, and one of them says tennis shoes, but you can't even read it. My husband was arguing that it didn't say that, but it does. Tennis shoes only. If we could possibly make the signs say, "No soccer, no skateboarding," and see if that'll at least help, or if you can think of some other way, that's the best I could come up with, maybe, maybe this time we could save the courts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Katie, and I guess I see Steve taking notes over there, our city manager, so we'll put that on our list. Thank you for coming down, appreciate it. Next is J. Edward Parker. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is J. Edward Parker. I'm a government representative of the Amateur Radio Relay League to the City of Sparks. Your clerk has just been handed paper invitations from one of our affiliate organizations, the Sierra Nevada Amateur Radio Society, who is inviting you to come up to our annual Field Day exercise at the EOC on the 28th and 29th. It'll be, as I understand it, from 6:00 PM on the 28th to about 6:00 AM on the 28th to about 6:00 PM on the 29th, and that's subject to change, but plenty of opportunity to come up and see amateur radio in chorus. We'd like to invite all of you, including your city officials, to come up and join us and see what amateur radio is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anyone else want a public comment? Okay, next, the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt. Move to approve. Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion?
Sure.
Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is recommendation to approve the minutes of the budget hearing on May 20, 2014, and the regular city council meeting of May 27, 2014. Any additions, or deletions, or corrections? If not, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Kerrigan to approve the hearing, budget hearing meeting minutes of the 20th, and the city council meeting of May 27th. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is 4.1, proclamation. Amateur Radio Month, and you'll be accepting this, Mr. Parker? No? I guess I can... Are you here to receive this?
I am.
Okay, good.
Whereas Nevada amateur radio operators, HAMs, are celebrating Nevada's 150th birthday and the 100th anniversary of the American Radio Relay League in which Nevada's amateur radio operators participated. And whereas Nevada's HAMs have chosen Virginia City as the location for their 2014 state convention entitled NevCon, Ham Radio on the Comstock, in association with the American Radio Relay League. And whereas Nevada's more than 6,800 licensed amateur radio operators provide countless hours of statewide and national voluntary communication services in times of emergency and disaster relief, and in support of public events. And whereas Nevada's specially-trained amateur radio operators provide such tireless service, equipment, and expertise without exception of reward or recognition, solely in the interest of and benefit of the citizens of Nevada and the United States of America. And whereas Silver State HAMs demonstrate their creative, technological, and emergency operational prowess in public view of all Nevada during their annual Field Day. Now therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim June 2014 as Nevada Amateur Radio Month for the City of Sparks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There you go. And if you want to say a couple more words, go ahead. If you want to say a few words, go ahead.
No, just thank you for your support.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for being here, sir, appreciate it. Okay, next is presentation of possible discussion of the Pyramid Way and McCarran Boulevard intersection improvement project. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. My name is Scott Gibson, I'm with the RTC, and I just wanted to give you all a brief update and status of the Pyramid-McCarren intersection progress, project. We've made a lot of progress on this over the last, well, we're eight years into this project, but it is kind of like a steamroller right now. There's a lot of stuff happening, and it's really moving forward. I wanted to particularly update you kind of on where we're at on the landscape and aesthetics portion of the design on this, and then I'll give a follow-up date on what the overall project is. On this, this is the intersection itself, this is Pyramid this way and McCarran this way, this is the church on this corner and the shopping center over here, and then these residential neighborhoods. And as you are probably familiar, we are, the project is taking all of these properties all the way up the east side of Pyramid, and on both sides, almost all the way through to Fourth Street on McCarran Boulevard, which gives us a lot of opportunities for landscape and improvements to the neighborhood. We've talked about this a long time, one of our major concerns is maintaining the integrity of this neighborhood, and concerns about the people that are left behind, that they have a viable, thriving neighborhood when we're done. And as you can see here, one of the great opportunities that we have is that with these houses gone, right now, if this guy wanted to go to the Rayleigh's over here, he'd have to get in his car and drive around this way and all of that. Now there's going to be access in and out of the neighborhood to just be able to make this a much more walkable, accessible to those services types of things, is one of our design goals. The inspiration, sort of the theme for the colors and the palette that's being used for the corridor is Pyramid Lake, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, we're in kind of still in development of refining those aesthetic components of it. But we've had some public meetings and some outreach. Councilmember Lawson is a part of our community working group, and we have some members of the community that kind of oversee things, that make sure that we're not getting out too far ahead of ourselves before we take them out to the public, and we had... So through our community working group and through a big public process, we have come up with a preferred alternative of what the landscape and the screening of the neighborhood looks like. We had three options, and this option is the one that the neighborhood preferred, where there was more visual screening between the houses that are left behind and the roadway itself. And so there'll be decorative walls, and berms, and trees, and then infill walls in between those. And then these are the access points in and out of the neighborhood itself that connect out to the, this big wide multi-use path that goes through the neighborhood. This example, for example, can kind of pop out directly onto Roberta Way and go directly across to the Starbucks over there if you lived on this side of the neighborhood. And so that was the overwhelming winner from that process. This is a little bit of a close-up of what the corner of Pyramid and McCarran will look like. Again, there's burming with different colors of stone that come up that kind of mimic the layers of the geology in the area, and again, access in and out of the neighborhood, and then visual screening walls, seatable boulders, shading areas. We're also in the process of developing some interpretive materials for this Green Bray subdivision that was developed by George Probosco back in the 50s, which this is a great example of post-World War II suburban development, and we have some great materials that kind of show some of the advertising materials that he used back in the day, where they were putting trucks on top of houses and saying, "You can't do this with a regular house, but a Probosco-built house." So it was some very interesting stuff about the history of the neighborhood that could be displayed here also. So currently, we've shown this image before, this was some of the sculptural elements that our designers came up with. This was a little bit strong and abstract for some of the community, and so we've gotten some pushback on that. And we are, again, having a meeting next week to discuss some other options that reflect, again, some of the Pyramid themes, but more the natural flora and fauna, and a little bit more realistic interpretation of some of those characteristics of the area and the region, and some of the ranching stuff as well. So we'll be looking to that, and Spark staff suggested maybe using our website as a way of presenting these to the public and getting some feedback, so we get some strong direction on these subjective kind of things that are difficult to get consensus on. Continuing activities on right-of-way acquisition and relocation, we're acquiring 70 properties out there. Currently, we own 39 of them, there was a huge interest in the participation in the early acquisition part. 23 of them are vacant now, the folks have already been moved out and relocated, and we've got about 20 of them in the process. The last 17 folks that weren't interested in the early acquisition are now involved in that process, and we're working with them on getting appraisals and that type of stuff. We'll continue to refine the landscape and aesthetics, and then the utilities have been an issue out there, and struggling to get NV Energy and AT&amp;T and those folks all to cooperate with each other has been a bit of a struggle. NDOT is taking the lead on coordinating that, but we will be undergrounding all the utilities through this area. So a lot of that visual clutter from the telephone poles and wires is going to be a great enhancement to the visual characteristics of the corridor as well. And we've identified where those are going to go, and so we're working with them now to fit in the walls and the utilities, and, again, one of the other aspects of it is there are a lot of existing mature trees that we're trying to maintain as part of the landscape and aesthetics theme as well. And it looks like there's going to be a lot of, we were worried at first that they were either going to get hit by the walls, or by the utility corridor, that type of thing, but it looks like we're going to be able to salvage a lot of the existing ones, which will help as well. Also, next week, we're due to get our 90% design submittals, and we'll begin the process of reviewing that with all of the agencies involved. And we're working on getting a demolition contract going, so that should be happening in the next few weeks as well. And as Councilman Smith mentioned earlier, we're hoping to start construction about this time next year, and should have the designs all finished up and out to bid in early spring, anyhow. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Let's move on to consent items, 5.1 through 5.6. Mr. Manager, did you want to pull 5.6 for discussion?
I would appreciate the chance of you just a quick presentation on that since it's related to the heart and lung.
Okay. Let's, anybody else want to pull any others? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then for 5.1 through 5.5, and then we'll pull 5.6 for discussion. Ms. Ratty.
To approve 5.1 through 5.5.
Do you have a second? Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, let's do 5.6. Consideration impossible approval to purchase an excess insurance policy for workers' compensation. Who's going to do this? Jill? Okay, come on down.
Mayor, City Council, for the record, Jill Valdez from Human Resources, here to present information for you about a proposal for a workers' compensation excess insurance premium policy for the fiscal year 1415. This policy, or one like it, is required by Nevada law for all workers' compensation. What makes it particularly difficult for a public entity like ours is that we do have police and fire, and there is special coverage through workers' compensation for heart, lung, cancer, and hepatitis. That special coverage means that we have a very limited pool of excess insurers who are willing to offer a policy to us. This particular policy, while it appears to be for a period of one year, it actually has quite a long tail. If someone were to file a heart-lung claim, and they retired this fiscal year, they could file this in 20, 30, 40 years. So there's a very long tail that comes back to this policy year. The city is responsible for the first $1.5 million of each claim for most employees, but for police and fire, we're responsible for the first $2 million. Although, you know, that is a significant portion for the city, as stated, some of these claims can be in excess of that $2 million, and we could have claims, either new claims or reopenings of claims for many, many years to come that will pay on this policy. In summary, it is staff's recommendation to the mayor and city council to approve the purchase of the policy that's been outlined for fiscal year 1415, in order to satisfy our legal requirement for excess insurance. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a little too, we have an option, do we?
We don't have very much of an option.
It's either go naked, or get covered for $85,000, right?
Right. We're required by law to have this in order to be self-insured.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty.
I would approve the purchase of excess insurance policy for workers' compensation for 201415, and authorize the execution of required policy documents by the contracts and risk manager as recommended.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 5.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jill, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, 6.1, consideration impossible acceptance of a justice assistance grant. Who's doing this? Chief Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is about the time they come before you every year in requesting the acceptance of this grant. This is the Edward M. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant through the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. This is a grant that we've applied for and maintained for almost over 10 years. The only consideration in this really is, over the course of the year with the federal financial problems, is this grant has reduced from around $50,000 a year down to the amount of about $25,000 this year. We use these funds for training and equipment that does not affect the general fund of the budget. The other interesting item about this year is, historically, we've applied or received this formerly grant in conjunction with Reno and Washoe County. However, this year, we were able to get more money because of our Part I UCR crimes, being a solo entity and managing the grant ourselves versus joining in with Reno and Washoe County.
Is it? Is it? Questions for Chief Allen? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve accepting the grant for $25,094.
So second, Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve agenda item 6.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. 6.2 is consideration impossible approval for the city council to accept the Federal Emergency Management Agency 2013 Assistance to Firefighter Grant for replacement of fire departments' self-contained breathing apparatus. Chief Garrison, welcome.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, for the record, Tom Garrison, Fire Chief. I'm here today seeking approval to accept 2013 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. This grant will fund the replacement of the vast majority of our SCBA, our self-contained breathing apparatus. The grant was awarded through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. I'd like to bring to your attention, before you guys vote, that there is a correction on the agenda item. When I submitted the agenda two weeks ago, I was working with FEMA and had not yet received official award. I did receive official award Friday, and between the time that I submitted the agenda item and the award, there was a revision to the award amount. So the totals will be, the new totals would be, the grant amount will now be $460,954 instead of $516,830, and the 10% match would be $46,095 instead of $51,683. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, we're going to take the rest of the money out of the general fund, or out of your budget to finish the project, or are you just going to try to reduce costs of the project?
There is a grant match line item in both the fiscal 14 and fiscal 15 budget that wasn't utilized in 14, and there's, I told, $75,000 in 15.
Okay.
So the money would come out of there.
So...
The match money would come out of there.
Okay. But make up the difference between the 4.16 and the 5.16?
What happened there was, I originally requested 69 PACs, and some of my calculations were deemed ineligible, so we got 61. So this will replace approximately 80% of our fleet.
So we're going to have to replace all 69 then?
Well, we're still considering that.
Okay, that's my question, who are we going to come up with the rest of the budget?
The rest of that money would come out of the fire department budget somewhere.
Then what do we do with our old equipment?
Well, that's an interesting question, too. The equipment is still usable, it's not obsolete, well, it's obsolete according to FEMA, but it's still usable. It's old, it's becoming a maintenance problem, and we're having some failures, but we can donate them to fire departments. There's a possibility that they could be sold in an auction-type environment, so there's a number of different avenues. We'll be working with Dan Maron on that.
Yeah, because the reason why I ask the question is I saw Las Vegas had their equipment on Craigslist this weekend.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, so it was the exact same thing, it was the PACs. That was an interesting way of disposing of city property, but, you know...
I don't know, Dan, is Craigslist a viable option?
I don't think it is, and I think it probably was...
Never heard of that one before, but...
Yeah. Dan Maron, contracts and risk manager, for the record. And disposal of surplus, whether we have three options when we're disposing of surplus, it's an auction environment, which presumably Craigslist might qualify for that, we can donate to other nonprofits. We also have the opportunity to trade in for credit against new sales. So one of the things that we'll consider when we go out to solicit, and that's when the other part of this story, is once we receive the money from the feds, we'll have to go out and do our own bid process to find an award for this, and one of the things that we can do is offer up existing inventory as a trade-in credit and evaluate that as part of it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions? Looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt.
Move to accept the FEMA 2013 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. 6.3 is consideration impossible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the city for the next policy periods. And I think you wanted to do also 6.4, consideration impossible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility.
With your judgment.
So you do 6.3 and 6.4 together, and then we'll vote individually on them.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager, for the record. Today, items 6.3 and 6.4 represent the regular annual renewal of insurance policies that cover events that may occur beyond the city's own self-insurance limits. 6.3 is specific to the city and includes coverage for property and contents, automotive physical damage, cyber liability, general liability, employee dishonesty, and tenant-user liability policies. We've maintained our levels of coverage in all areas, matching the same coverage that we had in place for the last 12 months, and within these lines, we saw an increase below our original projections. Originally, we were looking at increases in as much as 10%, but across the board, we're at about 4. So Ratty pleased with those numbers. And it should be noted that even though our premiums have inched up over the last few years due to market conditions and changes that we've made or initiated, we are still maintaining premium expenses that are well below those that we had as late as fiscal 9 and fiscal 10, and that's represented in the graph that was attached to both reports. 6.4 is the coverage at Tomworth, and specifically the property and contents coverage, which is an annual policy, and the pollution liability coverage, which is actually a three-year policy, and your approval today will cover that every three-year renewal. The primary property policy premium went down slightly this year by about 2%, which was a surprise, but we think it's due to the type of construction and the change in rates that the carrier has for that type of construction. The pollution liability policy that we carry for the plant again is renewed on a three-year cycle. Compared to the premium we last paid in fiscal 12, we're going to see a premium reduction of about 22%, or roughly $18,000, which we're quite pleased with, and this is entirely due to the competitive marketing of the policy by our insurance brokers in this cycle and our relatively clean loss record with respect to that type of coverage. We're not recommending any coverage changes at this stage, don't have any anticipated or recommended for this renewal cycle, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and as you've noted, our brokers are in the audience to answer any other more detailed expertise questions.
Okay, questions on 6.3 or 6.4? For Dan, questions of the insurance folks. Ms. Ratty.
Move to approve the purchase of insurance policies for 201415, and authorize the execution of required policy documents as recommended by the contracts and risk manager for item 6.3.
Does second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, questions on 6.4? Mr. Schmidt.
Just a quick question. I didn't see any. Does Reno pay for 2/3 of this policy?
Yes, they do.
They do? Okay, all right, thank you. So is our share then of it...
It's the normal split. We, everything is built into the Tomworth budget with respect to this operating expense, and it's billed the same ratio as all the others.
Our true fiscal impact is not 288.
Correct.
It's 1/3 of that.
Correct. But we're approving the full contract amount because we are the contracting agency on behalf of both.
Okay, thank you. I like the motion to approve as outlined.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Kerrigan, to approve 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it. Good job.
Back to work.
Yeah, back to work. Okay, 6.5 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2674, in ordinance by the City of Sparks, amending Title 13 of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow the collection of sewer connection fees to be deferred from building permit issuance to prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2674. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, June 23rd, 2014. 6.6 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2675, in ordinance by the City of Sparks, amending Title 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow the collection of residential construction tax to be deferred from building permit issuance to prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy and other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2675. The, the public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, June 23rd, 2014. 6.7 is a first reading.
Bill Number 2676, in ordinance, amending Chapters 5 and 9 of the Sparks Municipal Code to allow for vendor permits during special events and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2676. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, June 23rd, 2014. Okay, moving on to 6.8, consideration of possible approval of a settlement for, for action. Mr. Adams? Almost lost the name there, pal, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with the, um, confidential attorney-client sessions that I've had with individual members of the City Council, uh, two at a time and then, uh, one at a time, based upon that information where no deliberations, uh, took place, I would certainly ask the City Council for any deliberations and its decision on a, on the potential settlement of a claim that we discussed earlier.
Okay, questions for Mr. Adams? Okay, if not, looking for a motion, Mr. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Based upon the advice provided by the City Attorney, uh, I